Was I wrong?
I'm gonna pass it over to her after I open the session.
Okay, alright, sounds good.
Okay, so I think we are at eight o'clock, I'm sorry, nine o'clock. Today is Wednesday, July 26th. This is a Zoom special session of the Manzanita City Council regarding a land use hearing, um, appeal of 698 Dorcas Avenue, known as the Manzanita Lofts Hotel. I call this, uh, session to order. And Nancy, would you please do, uh, roll call?
Of course, um, Brad? Brad? Oh, he's muted. I know you're here. Okay, Brad, um, Jerry?
Here.
Linda?
Here.
And Jed?
Here, thank you. Um, and thank you to all of the citizens who, um, are joining us. It looks like a, a pretty full house here today. Um, because I have recused myself through the, um, majority of this discussion, um, Linda, our council president, Councilor Kozlowski, has taken over and will manage the, facilitate the meeting today. So Linda, I pass this over to you. Thank you for taking this on.
Certainly, thank you, Mayor Simmons. Um, good morning. Uh, my name is Linda Kozlowski, and I am the City Council President, and I will be presiding over a land use hearing today. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of an appeal of the Planning Commission decision to deny a planned unit development application, uh, to, a planned unit development application to create a thirty-four unit hotel at 698 Dorcas Lane in the SS, SRR Zone. At a special hearing on July 12th, 2023, the ca- the City Council determined that the scope of review per Manzanita, Manzanita zoning ordinance section ten point one eight oh will be restricted to the record made on the decision being appealed. This means that no new evidence has or shall be accepted, and that the City Council's decision will be made based on the evidentiary record and arguments made before the council today. This hearing is now open. The special criteria for approval are summarized, uh, in the staff report and will be reviewed at this hearing. All arguments must be directed toward the approval criteria. Please note, in their decision, the City Council may reject comments or ordinance citations that are not of use in these remand proceedings or evidence that was not submitted first before the Planning Commission. The case will begin with a city attorney's summary of the council's authority to make a decision in this matter. After that, I will ask the council members to declare any potential bias and ex parte comments. The applicant will have twenty minutes for their presentation, followed by twenty minutes for the presentation of the Oregon Coast Alliance, or ORCA, who, uh, inter- intervened on behalf of a group of concerned citizens before Luba. The staff report will follow. Counselors may then direct questions to those who testified. After that, those in favor of the proposal, and finally, those opposed to the proposal, may speak for five minutes. Please limit your comments to the criteria and avoid, and avoid reputation, rep- repetition, sorry. Uh, if anyone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is perfectly all right to state that you agree with the statements of the previous speaker. If you sent a written response to the proposal, please do not repeat your comments. They are all already part of the record. Finally, the applicant will be entitled to a ten-minute rebuttal. Time len- time limits per person shall not be extended by a person ceding their minutes to another person. At the close of the hearing, no further information shall be received except for specific questions of staff. Because this hearing is on the record, no new evidence will be introduced. At the conclusion of today's hearing, the City Council may enter into deliberations, but a final decision will not be rendered until the special hearing on July 28th, 2023, at ten AM, via Zoom. No additional testimony or argument will be permitted during that meeting, and the council will conclude the deliberations and make a final decision. I will now turn the meeting over to our city attorney's office for explanation about quorum.
Thank you. Yes, I'm here. Thank you. Um, the, the City Council's in, in a unique position today with only four members currently sitting, and two having previously recused themselves for potential bias or actual bias. And as you know, as we all know, there are a number of requirements on the city for this land use hearing. Um, the first is the hundred and twenty day time clock, which I'll talk about in a second. And then the second issue is that the city must have authority to make a decision on the application, or the council must have quorum, meet all the quorum requirements and the charter's requirements to actually render a final decision in this matter. So I'm gonna give a bit of background about how those two issues intersect, and then, um, give an explanation of what the council can do to move forward and make its final decision. So as we're all aware, the city has a hundred and twenty days from the date that a remand is initiated to make a final decision in writing. The hundred and twenty day time clock has been extended by one week, but it is still currently set to expire on August 4th. And the consequences of failing to make a determination within a hundred and twenty days on remand can include that the matter may be moved out of the typical land use process into a court proceeding, and could potentially result in the city having less or no control over whether the use is approved, and also an award of another party's attorney fees and costs against the city. But as it sounds now, the timeframe for the city isn't an issue. The council can have, hold its hearing today, make a determination on Friday, and reduce that decision to a final written decision within the timeframe to act. The second issue before the council, um, relates to quorum. Based on the Manzanita City Charter, Section fourteen, a majority of the members of the council shall constitute a quorum to transact business, um, but a smaller number may meet and compel the attendance of the absent members. The, the provision that's more at issue here today is Section nineteen of the Charter, which requires a concurrence of a majority of the members of the City Council to decide any question before the council. So together, these provisions require that at least three members of the council agree, well, participate in the land use hearing. And then at least three council members must agree on the result to make a final determination. And at present, we only have two council members participating in the hearing. That's not enough for the council to officially decide any question. There need to be at least three votes to make a decision under Section nineteen of the Charter. The way to resolve this is to move forward under an exception in Oregon law. It's called the rule of necessity, and that's in O R S two, four, four, one, twenty, Section two, subsection B, subsection B. And that allows counselors who have otherwise recused themselves due to, due to actual conflicts to vote if their vote would be necessary for, um, the council to meet a minimum number of votes to take an official action. This law allows members with conflicts to vote, but not to participate in the discussion or deliberations. And under Luba case law, the same exception applies to counselors who have recused themselves for bias. And so the rule of necessity here would allow the formerly recused counselors to participate in the vote only. So they won't be participating in any of the discussion today or any of the discussion or deliberations on Friday, but will be able to participate in the vote. The rule of necessity does not change the requirements of Section nineteen of the Charter. So in other words, the vote on Friday, if it ended up being a two to two tie, that would not be a final decision. At least three members have to agree on whatever option they choose, whatever option the council chooses. So to move forward, the council can follow the following process. It will hold the hearing today. Councilor Merrily and Mayor Simmons will need to state the nature of the potential or actual bias for the record, declare any ex parte contacts they may have had, including the nature and substance of those contacts, in order to allow the other parties an opportunity to rebut the contacts. And then on Friday, the council will discuss and deliberate, and the two formerly recused members of the council won't participate in that portion of the hearing, but will participate in the vote. And when the council votes, the two deliberating members will vote first, and then the two formerly recused members will have a chance to vote. And if the first vote results in three members in agreement, the second formerly recused member doesn't need to vote. And then I, this is on a separate issue, I just also like to remind the council and the public that this is a two-part hearing, um, and because of that, the council may not discuss the decision or any, the may not deliberate or discuss between the two hearings, and can't have any ex parte contact with any person participating here today or anyone else about the decision that they will be making on Friday. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Are there any questions from council? Okay, I, I see none. Um, with procedurals out of the way, I need to ask the audience if there is any objection to the notice that was sent in this case. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case?
Um, the applicant has an objection.
Go ahead.
Um, we object to the inclusion of both of the recused commissioners in the voting process. Uh, under the statute that Ms. Miller just cited, the rule of necessity only requires the participation of previously recused members, uh, to be a minimal amount necessary to achieve a quorum. A quorum of this council is three votes. Then we have two participating members who have not recused themselves, so we only need the participation of one more councilperson in the ultimate vote, not two. I would point out that given that the, uh, two councilmembers have recused themselves based on, um, concerns about bias against the application, that would most, most likely suggest they're gonna vote against the application, resulting in at best, a two to two vote, which would be, uh, not, would not overturn the Planning Commission's decision, making this hearing essentially a farce. So, um, we object to the inclusion of both commissioners, uh, commissioners. Um, we would not object to the inclusion of one or the other.
Uh, Savani, do you wanna respond to that?
Um, I think that will be resolved by the process that we have laid out. If the first person votes in agreement or in agreement with the other two members, then the second person would not need to vote, um, to make any final action, but if the, that person disagrees, then the third person would need to have an opportunity to vote for the council to make a final action, because we need to have three in agreement. So I think I-
No, you don't need to have three in agreement, you did have three voters for a quorum.
Well, that's, there's not-
A quorum of three, and you'll vote a two to one in favor of that overturning the appeal. Or overturning the division, I should say.
So there's a wrinkle in the Manzanita Charter that requires a concurrence. So that's Section nineteen. It requires a concurrence of three members on the council to act, which is the provision that we're kinda working through here. Um, I understand that that's unusual.
I'm advocating that three members act. I mean, this is a, the standard point of, of ruled Roberts of order. Once you have a quorum, a majority of the quorum, uh, can make a binding decision.
That's not correct under the city's charter.
Uh, I disagree, I disagree, and I object.
Okay. Then I think that the council can just note the objection and move forward.
Okay, so noted.
Thank you.
So are there any other objections, uh, to this hearing or the jurisdiction of this hearing? Okay, other than the applicant's objection, I hear none. I need to now ask the council, are there any declarations of conflict or bias, ex parte contact, or site visits by any member of this body? And I will start, uh, I have done a site visit in the last, I've actually done two site visits in the last month, and I, it's a, I go by it all the time, so I'm very familiar with the site.
Uh, I'll go next on the issue of site visit. I did, uh, uh, make a purposeful site visit, uh, recently. Um, I'm also very familiar with the area just from, uh, traveling back and forth to the recycling center on Classic. Um, I've also visited the site from the fifth fairway, uh, not on purpose, but because a slice or two. Um, but I've not had any ex parte contacts, I've never met Mr. Sorelli, I don't know his attorney, I've not met Mr. Malone. Um, there certainly have been plenty people in the community who've wanted to talk about this, but I resisted any, uh, substantive discussions about, uh, this matter with anybody in the community.
Thank you, Jerry. Brad?
Um, well, let's, uh, start the beginning, I guess. Uh, last summer, when I was a candidate, I, um, gave, uh, public testimony, uh, once before council. Uh, I can't remember if I did it twice, I know I did it at least once. Um, I also signed a petition, uh, that, uh, asked the City Council to, uh, look at concerns, uh, about the project. Uh, in addition, I attended, uh, meetings of the concerned citizens of Manzanita. I only did that up until the time of the election. Um, I have not, uh, participated or, um, joined those meetings, um, since the election. I haven't ever met the applicant, uh, or any of the attorneys, or anyone I believe represents him. And I haven't made a, uh, site visit, but I've certainly driven by it a billion times, so that's what I got.
Thanks, Brad. And Jed?
Yes, uh, in April and May of two thousand twenty-two, prior to any political decisions about running for office, I gave public testimony at the June two thousand twenty-two council meeting. The concerns voiced, um, uh, Savani said we needed to be transparent and complete. Uh, the concerns voiced were about the infringement of wetland and public safety, safety. Around that same time period, I, along with a hundred and thirty-plus other citizens, signed a petition with the concerned citizens of Manzanita, known as CCOM. My announcement to run for mayor did not happen until, uh, August. As an elected official, I have attended two CCOM meetings, I think it's two, but, um, I left, I got up and left when any discussion arose pertaining to, uh, this particular development. And as an elected official, I have sworn an oath to look at the facts and uphold the laws and procedures pertaining to any development decision. I have not had any conversation with citizens after the last, uh, Planning Commission meeting, in which I thanked them for their diligent service. I have never met the applicant. I drive by the site, um, probably every day, um, but I've never walked down below, um, uh, to look at things more closely. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will note for the record that Mayor Simmons and Councilor Merrily have declared the reasons that they initially recused themselves, as well as their ex parte contacts. As we heard from our city attorney's office, they can be present for the hearing today and may participate in the vote on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. They will not be permitted to participate in any decision, discussions or deliberations, uh, in the process. All right, we are ready now to talk about the issues before the council. And Scott, would you please put the issue up on the screen? The issues up on the screen.
Here, give me just a minute to get this on there.
Okay.
Uh, Nancy, I need to be able to share my screen.
All right, permission granted.
There you go.
I, I wanted this to be really clear, uh, because we are, we are limited to the issues that we'll discuss that are before the council. Uh, and we are limited to the issues that will, will, I will just read. As indicated in the, in the notice and applicant's request for council review, there are few issues for the council to decide. These are also listed in the staff report. But to sum up, A, with respect to MZO three point oh three oh, subsection four, subsection A, the council must decide. One, the council need not determine whether the dwelling units apply to the hotels' units if the council determines that based on the evidence in the record, the proposed use can meet the density standard by dedicating forty percent of the total lot or parcel area for use as a public or private park. If the council determines that the density standard is met, the council may approve the use with a condition of approval requiring the applicant to designate forty percent of the total lot or parcel area as a park. Two, alternatively, the council may make an interpretation on the record about whether dwelling units, as used in the code, indicates the proposed, proposed hotel units. If no, this criterion presents no bias for denial, and the council should find that the applicant meets the, the criterion. If yes, then the council will need to consider whether the density standards can be met. Three, if the council determines that the hotel units are dwelling units, it would need to determine whether the proposed are uh, the proposed use can meet the density standard. I'll read that again. If the council determines that the hotels' units are dwelling units, it would need to determine whether the proposed use can meet the density standards. If yes, the evidence in the record shows that the proposed use can meet the density standards by dedicating at least forty percent of the total area as a public or private park, then the council should find that the applicant meets this criterion. If no, the evidence in the record shows that the proposed use cannot meet the density standard by dedicating at least forty percent of the total area as a public or private park, then the council should find the application does not meet the criterion. B, with respect to MZO four point one three six, subsection three, subsection C, subsection five, the City Council must determine whether, based on the evidence in the record, the streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic, and the development will not overload the streets outside the planned area. If the evidence shown shows that the streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic, and the development will not overload the streets outside the planned area, it should determine that this criterion is met. If the evidence shows that the streets are inadequate to support the anticipated traffic, or that the development will overload the streets outside the planned area, it should determine that this criterion is not met. Okay, Scott, you can take that down, now. Um, we are now ready to proceed. Um, Nancy, will you be our timekeeper?
Um, yes, I will.
Thank you. First, would the applicant please make the case for their appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny planned unit development application of six ninety-eight Dorcas Lane? You have twenty minutes.
Uh, thank you, Vito here. I just wanted to start off by, you know, saying thank you again for hearing this case. Um, I just wanna follow up on a couple items for things that going, um. Again, the SRR is an outright zone use for a hotel or motel, and it's what I've been proposing in this application from the, from the start of the review. These are not intended for dwelling or long-term living units. They're, would be designed and built to a commercial use, similar to the last hotel that was approved in Manzana, uh, similar to the Coast cabins a block away. Um, throughout this process, I haven't been asking for modifications or any adjustments to the code. There's no variances, um, in early staff reports and in pre-app meetings, uh, this can be, be seen. Um, I had meetings with the sewer, the water, the fire department, all of which have reviewed and approved either access or, or utilities to the site. Uh, throughout the, the last year and a half, there, I've been requested to follow up with wetlands, with stormwater review. Both of those have come back with, with no issues. Um, DSO was onsite and, and confirmed and concurred with their state findings that there's no wetlands on site. Um, after, after these items, traffic was the last one that was needed to be reviewed further, and we did a full traffic analysis based on the scope and letter provided by the city of Manzanita's third-party consultant. Um, we did calculations on site, created a report, and from my understanding, the, the city's review of their, from their third party came back, there's no impact per the code outlined, so they concurred with our findings. Um, and I guess at this point, I just, I hope that we can review the zoning code and, and if there's any items that we feel are not being met within the zoning ordinance established by the city, um, it'd be great to discuss any conditions that you, you feel are not being satisfied, because I've put a lot of time and energy to work within those parameters that have been established by the city and, uh, are open to a discussion if there's any items that you feel that are not being met. So appreciate your time.
Thank you. So my name is David Peterson, I'm attorney for the applicant. Um, my address is eight 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 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite sixteen hundred, Portland, Oregon, nine seven two oh four. First, with respect, uh, to Manzanita zoning ordinance three point oh three oh four A, the Planning Commission, uh, committed a number of errors in response, in with respect to its findings on this criteria. The first error is that the commission concluded that hotel rooms are dwelling units. In fact, hotel rooms are not dwelling units, so this criteria does not apply to that application. Under the city's definition of a dwelling unit, a dwelling unit must expressly quote, "be designed or intended for occupancy as separate living quarters." Now, the Planning Commission in its decision ignored this part of the definition and made no finding with respect to it. There's a, a number of independent reasons why, under this definition, a hotel room is not designed or intended for occupancy as separate living quarters. First, uh, and if you look at my, uh, our letter on appeal, I elaborate upon this using stand, standard dictionary definitions. A dwelling and living quarters are places where people live, whereas hotels are transient lodging, commercial business where additional services are provided, that one does not get into dwelling. Two different things. Oregon law is the same. O R S six nine nine point zero zero five sub two defines hotel rooms as places rented as transient lodgings and not principal residences. O R S six nine nine point zero zero five sub four then defines transient lodging as a place not occupied as a principal residence. And there are several other examples in Oregon law of dwelling units being places of permanent residence as contrasted with temporary lodging like a hotel, and those are cited in our appeal letter, and I encourage the commission to review those. The Oregon Court of Appeals has similarly made this distinction in the case of Friends of Yamhill County versus Yamhill County, which is cited in our appeal letter. Quote, "A dwelling or residence requires use as a home. A home is occupied on a long-term or permanent basis, not in a transitory way." And then further on in that decision, the court expressly concluded that a hotel is not a residence or a dwelling. The Manzanita zoning ordinance is the same. The Manzanita zoning ordinance in the regulations for this zone expressly lists dwelling units and hotels as separate uses. If hotels were dwelling units, there would be no need to list them as separate permitted users. We also allow, also this conclusion that hotel rooms are dwelling units would have the, uh, most likely unintended consequence of making hotels a permitted use in other zones in the city that allow dwelling units, but not separately allow hotels, which is not an outcome I think you want. It is clear that the City Council, when they enacted the code, intended hotel rooms and dwelling units to be two different things. And then lastly, I would just appeal to common sense- And then lastly, I would just appeal to common sense. I think we all know in our hearts, that hotel rooms and dwelling units are different things. Right? A hotel is a commercial business where you stay for a short period of time and where you receive numerous services. Like housekeeping, uh, and some hotels receive meals, not necessarily this hotel. Uh, you have a front desk, you know, you have a linen service, things like that. This is not a dwelling. The planning commission also erred by finding that the proposed site plan did not meet Manzanita code three point oh three oh four A. And this is of course, based on the assumption that hotel rooms are dwelling units and nothing provision even applies. This site is three point eight one acres, which at thirteen dwelling units an acre would authorize fifty units, and this is a thirty-four hotel room project. Forty percent of the site is about sixty-six thousand square feet. The applicant has proposed seventy-nine thousand square feet of open space, mostly at the south end of the site. So as to cluster the hotel rooms at the north end, consistent with M Z O language encouraging clustering. So where this got followed up with planning commission is an elaborate discussion by the planning commissioners about whether or not the dedication or reservation of that space would qualify as a park. Planning commission's subjective judgment as to whether it is or is not a park contradicts both common understanding and prior city practice. And I would point out by the way that your code does not define a park. I believe it is universally understood that minimally maintained open space can be and is a park in many places. Regardless of the size or the configuration of the site. And I would encourage the commission to think about places like national and state parks. Truly immense areas of unmaintained open space. Forest Park in the city of Portland, same thing. Mill End's Park in the city of Portland, that's a space about this big. It's a tree in the middle, a two-foot circle, and that's a park. Okay, so. You know, the, the, the long discussion that the planning commission about whether it feels like a park or not is really not the issue here. The proposed open space is being proposed as a park. I would also, uh, direct the commission's attention to the classic street cottages. In that project, the city approved the use of the thirteen dwelling unit per acre standard under this code provision by aggregating multiple non-contiguous parcels, some of which are as small as one or two tree, trees and a plant or strip. And I direct the commission's attention to the classic street cottage approved open space plan, which is in our appeal letter and also exhibit D to that letter. Open space offered here is better. It is all one contiguous parcel. Uh, even though not necessary, the applicant is willing to eliminate the narrow strip, strip along classic that the planning commission didn't like. And we provided an alternative open space proposal as exhibit E to our appeal letter. Showing how the open space forty percent rule will still be met even without that strip of land. Nothing about either our original proposal or the alternative proposal can reasonably be said to not be a park. It is a contiguous reasonably shaped open space area that exceeds forty percent of the site, encourages clustering of the hotel units. The planning commission also erred by failing to apply clear and objective standards to what it ultimately concluded is an application for housing. One of the consequences of concluding that this project proposes dwelling units is that the project then becomes subject to Oregon statutes about housing. Those statutes, which are O R S one ninety-seven, three oh seven, four and two two seven, one seven five, four V A. Require that only clear and objective standards be applied to the approval of housing. This means objective benchmarks can be applied, but subjective analysis cannot. Now, the M Z O three point oh three oh four A calculation is on its face an objective mathematical calculation. Simply count up the square feet of open space divided by the square feet of the site. If you're over forty percent, you qualify for the increased dwelling unit standard. But the planning commission erred by adding this objective element of whether it is or is not a park. When doing so, the commission provided no objective definition of a park. It only concluded that this particular proposal was not a park. The planning commission's finding, I'll quote it. The proposed open space in this case is too narrow and too close to the roadway and is not suitable for recreation. But the planning commission does not tell us how wide or far away is good enough for what it means to be suitable for re, for recreation. This is ad hoc, subjective, case-by-case, standardless decision-making that violates state law regarding clear and objective criteria for housing. Unfortunately for this commission, this problem is easily solved. All you need to do is interpret the code provision to say that any dedication or reservation of open space that meets the forty percent threshold triggers the increased density standard without this subjective analysis of whether it is or not a park. This also has the added bonus of being consistent with the city's past practice as shown by the classic street cottages open space plan. Next, I'm going to turn to the traffic criteria, M Z O four point one three six C five. That criteria requires a finding based on the evidence that the streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic and the development will not overload the streets outside the planning air, planned area. And in response, I'm going to read the entirety of the planning commission's finding in response to this criterion. Quote, the traffic expected to be generated by this development at peak time will overload the adjoining roadways. Planning commission cites no evidence at all in the record to support this conclusory statement. Part of the reason it does that is because there is none. The only actual evidence of traffic impacts in the record is the applicant's traffic study from twenty-two as updated on May third, twenty twenty-three. This updated study was prepared consistent with the April twenty twenty-three scoping letter from the city's traffic consultant Lancaster Mobley. And Lancaster is on the record in these proceedings that it agrees with all of the conclusions of the applicant's analysis. And I will also point out that there has been no subsequent contrary analysis or evidence introduced into the record after May third that contradicts any of the evidence or findings in that, in that traffic report. To understand the study in full, I would recommend that the commission read the study and also the detailed summary of it in my letter to the planning commission on May fifth. But I would like to summarize briefly what those conclusions are. The traffic engineer began by taking actual traffic count at the site in August twenty twenty-two, which ODOT has confirmed is the busiest traffic month in the city of Manzanita. The engineer then added expected trips to be generated by the hotel using the I T E trip generation manual data specifically for hotels. Now, I'll point out that the data specifically for hotels takes into account vehicle behavior for hotels, such as busy check-in and checkout times. Which is one of the concerns that the planning commission expressed during their deliberations. In fact, the data actually accounts for how hotels generate traffic. Then the study added in expected other growth in the city, both from or just organically and from other projects that have been approved but have yet to come online. And it evaluated all of this traffic during the weekday, afternoon, peak hour and on Saturday in August. In other words, the busiest hours of the week specific to a hotel in the busiest month of the year in Manzanita. And with all this data at the busiest hours of the busiest month of the year and accounting specifically for hotel traffic patterns, this is what the data shows. First of all, when compared to pre-development conditions, meaning right now. Delays at the La Nita and Classic intersection will increase by zero point one to zero point three seconds per vehicle. That's much shorter than it took me to just say that sentence. Delay will increase at La Nita and Highway one by one point seven seconds per vehicle. Delays cannot increase at all at Classic and Dorcas, which is the most hot button intersection in this entire application. And on the busiest hour of the entire year, the hotel adds on an average of one car every three minutes at Classic and Dorcas. And no queue at the stop sign will ever regularly exceed one car. No intersection in the city after completion of this project will operate below level of service B. Which in traffic engineer parlance is really like the second best level of service standard and is generally considered acceptable. Um, the only one that could possibly be better is level of service A. And per ODOT, La Nita and one oh one will continue to operate within acceptable standards as established by ODOT. I reiterate, the city's own traffic engineer, who I hope is participating in this hearing and can confirm it, has already testified that it fully concurred with the applicant's analysis and found no adverse traffic events from this project. In response, there is no contrary evidence. Mere speculation and anecdotes are not evidence. Consequently, this commission is really, has only one option here, and that is to rely on the only evidence in the record that actually speaks to traffic impacts. And the only reasonable conclusion that can be made in that evidence is that the project will not overload the streets and this criterion is met. Relatedly, the planning commission's finding is also an impermissible collateral attack on the city's approved transportation plan. As part of that planning, the city has already determined that the streets are adequate to support all permitted uses in this zone and hotels as an expressly permitted use. I refer the council to O A R, or that stands for Oregon Administrative Rule six six zero dash zero one two that has zero zero six zero commonly known as transportation planning rule. And that rule says that when rezoning property, the assessment of traffic impacts must consider the full ranges of uses allowed, including the most intense uses allowed in that zone. So therefore, when the city zoned this property S R dash R with hotels as a permitted use, it is already concluded that, that existing traffic facilities are adequate to support the traffic that permitted users will generate. That determination cannot be collaterally attacked now in the context of site plan review for an outright permitted use. I would also point out to the council the practical ramifications of agreeing with the politi, planning commission on this matter. By effectively concluding that an average of one car every three minutes during the busiest hour of the year is too much. How will anything new ever get built in Manzanita? This will effectively stop all development, including future phases of Highlands, and make it impossible for the city to make, meet its statewide legal obligations to accommodate growth. Lastly, I want to talk about the issue of the trail. If I have time, and my timer's off, so I'm just going to assume I do. Um. In the first planning commission hearing, the planning commission expressed concern about pedestrians and bicyclists on Classic. The traffic study showed no adverse impacts of the project to pedestrian bike traffic, so therefore no mitigation for it could be mandated. However, to be cooperative, the applicant voluntarily revised its site plan to evaluate a possible pedestrian and bike trail on the site. Um, to accommodate that trail, they revised the site plan to show the additional open space strip along Classic. Uh, but the end result of the applicant's evaluation showed that a pedestrian trail could be done, but the interior slope on the site was too steep for bikes, too steep for bicycles. At its final hearing, the planning conclusion that, planning commission concluded that it didn't like the trail. But the lack of a trail does not result in adverse traffic impacts on Classic. The traffic study already showed that Classic is perfectly adequate now to handle pedestrian bike traffic and the project would not change that. So the applicant should not be penalized for revising the open space to try to voluntarily accommodate the planning commission's suggestion. It's perfectly happy to build a trail or not build a trail, but under any circumstance, it does not affect project's compliance with the applicable law criteria. Lastly, I'll just point out that the tra, the applicant's traffic engineer, Mr. Aaron, is here sitting to my right and would be happy to answer any specific traffic analogous questions. And then the last point I just want to make for the record is that the applicant does not object to proposed conditions E like elephant and K like kite. Uh, but notes that they have already been completed. So that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. You're on mute.
Uh, I believe it's time for Orca to make their presentation.
Good afternoon, or good morning to the city council. Sean Malone on behalf of Oregon Coast Alliance. I don't think I will be taking the full twenty minutes, but, uh, we'll see how that goes. I'm going to start in sort of a reverse fashion here, beginning with the, the traffic issue. There was an argument made about collateral attack on the transportation plan. That is an issue that was not raised in the appeal. Uh, the notice of appeal, so that's something that cannot be, uh, ruled upon by the city council. It's not something that the applicant could take further because again, it was not raised in their, uh, appeal letter. Um. The basic issue with the traffic, if we look back to Luba's decision, is that the city made sort of a typo error there. When they said that i- in their previous findings that the project would generate more than three hundred and nine vehicle trips. So that ended up being incorrect as the, as Luba's indicated. Uh, and I'm quoting from page twenty-eight of the decision, uh, Luba's decision. Both petitioners and opponents' traffic engineer estimated the project would generate up to three hundred and nine vehicle trips on the peak day, a Saturday in the summer. Evidence that a project would generate up to three hundred and nine trips does not establish that a project would generate more than three hundred and nine trips. So that was the basis in part uh, of, of that remand issue. So the city council could take a look at that, um, those three hundred and nine trips and analyze them in accordance with up to three hundred and nine trips on a particular day instead of more than three hundred and nine trips. Uh, so it was, it was sort of a simple little error, but nonetheless had, you know, some consequences. So, uh, again, the city can interpret its own code to determine uh, whether three hundred and nine trips on a particular day or trips on other particular days, uh, would, um, would cause problems for the city's traffic. And the second part of that is that the, the city council did not, um, sort of identify how the trips would be, uh, directed to downtown. That was the other part of Luba's holding with regard to that substantial evidence issue. So the city would, city council has to address this issue of how are the, um, uh, how is the traffic directed downtown if the city council is going to again rely on that as they did previously, uh, where the issue was taken to Luba. So. Just to recap there. The city council would have to address that criterion in the context of up to three hundred and nine, um, uh, trips on a particular day, not more than three hundred and nine trips. So that was sort of just a very simple little error that can be addressed. And then obviously the council needs to, if they're going to rely on the notion of trips being directed downtown, the council would have to, um, interpret how that is occurring. Uh, or provide evidence that's in the record as to how the traffic would be directed downtown. And again, the collateral attack issue is not something that was raised in the appeal letter. So it can't be, um, it's not a basis for a, a, any argument here. On that issue of, of sort of new arguments and evidence outside the record, there is a lot of that here unfortunately. So we need to, the city council has to, um, very specifically determine whether a lot of the allegations, uh, some of the exhibits included, and then arguments are, arguments that are part of the record because again, we're on the record here. Uh, it has to have been raised before and the evidence has to already be in the record. Moving to the issue of dwelling units, um. This issue, the city council or the planning commission determined, you know, they identified four factors that are listed in the definition of, uh, dwelling unit that that are present in hotels. And the planning commission apparently, um, satisfied that part of the, the definition. There's another part of the definition uh, that the applicant is now focusing on. Now again, this is the, these words, um. Some of these words aren't defined in the code, but they're all part of the city's code. The city council gets significant interpretive deference in interpreting how those provisions uh, are to be applied and interpreted. So. What the applicant here is doing is first pointing to definitions in their appeal letter uh, that arise on the internet, their internet links, they're in footnotes. So the first thing the city council has to do is determine whether those links are part of the record, the definitions that the applicant's pulling off of Merriam Webster's website, which is not the, uh, appropriate, um, resource to use. There's a particular, uh, dictionary that the, that the Oregon courts sort of rely on. And the city council has to determine whether it can even look at those definitions, whether hyperlinks are something that uh, it can do, given that it's likely outside the record. And the city council would have to look and see whether the applicant has previously provided those definitions. And I would argue that those definitions haven't been provided because, uh, they're just hyperlinks to, to the internet and that would appear to be outside of the record here. So at first blush, the applicant's arguments about these various commonplace definitions are, are sort of outside the record because they're pointing to something clearly outside the record. The other issue is that the applicant is pointing to a variety of O R S provisions and even a case, uh, Friends of Yamhill County and even a case, Friends of Yamhill County, to make its case that a dwelling unit cannot include a hotel room. Simply put, and I've set this forward in a written letter to the city council, I sent it last night, hopefully that's been received. The applicant points to ORS six, ORS chapter 699, a particular provision in there, the definition of hotel. But that really means very little here because those definitions apply only to ORS 699.005 to 699.060. That's according to the, the plain language of the statute. Those dictionary, those definitions of hotel have no bearing here. They're not controlling for this particular purpose. And this, the applicant continues to do that with other provisions. Again, in our letter, we point out that those aren't applicable. Applicant points to ORS chapter 90, which is landlord-tenant law. Again, that doesn't have, that doesn't, there's nothing in state statute that indicates that that somehow applies to the city of Manzanita's code. It's just, it, it, it's irrelevant, essentially. So, and again, those, where, oftentimes when you see in state statutes, they'll include definitions and then will identify where those definitions apply. And typically, they apply to the same chapter where they're being defined. The applicant also addresses a Yamhill County case related to Yamhill County, 1,000 friends case of Oregon, where they're addressing dwelling, dwelling unit, motel, and that's all in the context of a home occupation, which has a particular provision in RS 215. Again, there's nothing, one of the things there is that they were looking at Yamhill County's specific definition of dwelling, dwelling unit, and so forth, and how that interacts with the home occupation statute. We are in an entirely different scenario here, where we're looking at the city's definitions of dwelling unit, hotel, I know, I understand hotel isn't defined. But the take-home issue there is that the Yamhill County case just simply has nothing to do with this case. This case does not even have an overarching state statute that controls. And in the same way that in that case, the home occupation statute sort of controlled and conflicted with local definitions. Here, we just don't have that. There's no overarching statute that would control or conflict. Again, the city council has significant deference. It's referred to as supporrend deference, in which the city council just has to set forth a plausible definite, a plausible interpretation. The city council can rely on, obviously, its own definition of dwelling unit, how the planning commission applied that, and then, you know, apply the other half of the definition of dwelling unit in the code. And again, that interpretation just needs to be plausible. The city council can look at the text, can use context, and even a legislative history if possible, and then also refer to purposes and policies of those code provisions. So I think that issue is, is, is relatively easy for the city council to determine. The other issue here is, assuming the city council determines that the 40% issue, that we get to the 40% issue. My appeal, or my response to the appeal letter, again, just relies on what I've submitted before. And, and I can read that. "The open space in park contains a long strip of narrow, dark green, abutting buildings. Other portions of alleged open space in park include entire buildings, six buildings, in fact. Open space should not include buildings in narrow areas immediately adjacent to a building." So we're dealing with open space here too, not just parks. "In other areas, the alleged open space in park are no wider than the proposed sidewalk. Again, this is inconsistent with the common understanding of what is meant as an open space in park." I would also refer the planning commission to the, to letters, the letters from William Gumpenberger dated June 3, 2023, which indicates that the applicant is not satisfied with the 40% standard. Yeah, the application was therefore being denied, and that's reading from my prior submission to the planning commission. There's also, again, issues about whether we, the applicant has strayed from the record here. The applicant's talking about Forest Park in Portland. Is there any evidence in the record about Forest Park in Portland? There's another park called Mill Ends Park. Is, is there any information in the record about that park? Not that I'm aware of. The same is true of the Classic Street cottages development, which is included as exhibit D. I think that must be stricken from the record. So I, I I believe that much of what the applicant's setting forth, in, in, in terms of their arguments, is outside the record or with regard to the dwelling unit issue, irrelevant with regard to all these overriding ORS statutes because they just do not apply here. The applicant also argues that it can or would be willing to entertain the notion of a revised site plan. Again, that is something that would be sort of a moving target and would be new evidence. So that's something that the city council can't entertain at this point in time. It's based on what the applicant's already submitted, not something that the applicant may want to change in light of previous errors or failings. So again, because we are on the record here, we are confined to the record. We can't entertain all of these extraneous things. The final issue I'll talk about is this argument, again, that the, the applicant raised this at the planning commission. My recollection is the applicant conceded that the issue was waived, that Luba actually determined that the issue was waived because it wasn't raised way back then. And that's this notion that if the city council for this particular application determines that a dwelling unit can include a hotel room or motel room, then that would all of a sudden make the needed housing statutes, clear and objective requirements, apply here. Page six of the Luba decision concluded that the applicant's fifth assignment of error was waived, that assignment of error was essentially that the needed housing. If you apply this definition of dwelling unit to a motel room, then all of a sudden, the needed housing statute will apply, and you can only apply clear and objective criteria. Luba specifically rejected that argument over, already, indicating that it had been waived. And so, again, there, there's a lot of issues here that are, weren't raised, were already waived, or constitutes evidence outside the record. And so because we are on the record in this particular proceeding, we need to stick to the record. With regard to the city attorney's comment about the Manzanita charter and requirement for concurrence, I would defer to the city's attorney. I think they are a little bit more well-versed in the charter. And the, the final thing I'll say here is that, and this is something we've been maintaining the entire time, that Manzanita zoning ordinance 3.0304A, which is this, which has arisen as a result of the applicant's sort of change in course to make a park. The last sentence of that provision has not been addressed by the applicant. And it specifically states that the open space shall be so indicated on the plan and zoning map and deed restrictions to the effect shall be filed with the city. That means that the comprehensive plan and zoning map need to be amended in light of this new park. And that is just plain language that everyone is sort of ignoring, but has not yet been complied with. And the way you comply with something like that is you have basically two options. You can say the applicant has to demonstrate that that comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendment is occurring now, and that it has been satisfied. Or what the city council can do is provide for a condition of approval that says, because you're not satisfying that criterion now, you can come back and, and, and satisfy that at a later time. But at that later time, all of the rights, the appeal rights, the comment rights, the, the participation rights, all of those still apply. And the applicant has to go through the same process for that comprehensive plan amendment. So again, the last sentence of MZO 3.03, 3.0304A, states that the open space shall be so indicated on the plan and zoning map, and that has not yet been complied with. So that the city council could, in addition to the other issues, deny the application on that point. And, or the, the city council can impose a condition of approval, requiring that the applicant come back and, and accomplish that at a later time. But again, that would just be the same process that's occurring here with all the same participation rights for the public, appeal rights for the public, and so forth. So despite the fact that there's only a few issues, there's actually, when we dig into it, there's a lot of issues. And I think a lot of those arise as a result of the failure to confine the arguments and evidence to the record. And with that, absent any questions, I'd be happy to return the, the issue to, I think, staff with the staff report. But I also think that the, the testimony that will come in from the public is, is important, especially with regard to the park issue, because the public is so very much aware of that issue, deals with it on a daily basis, that area. And, and, and they're going to be the ones that are going to be left with the traffic and whatever becomes of this potential park. So I, I think their testimony is, is just as important, if not more important, than Orca's here today. Thank you.
You're on mute again, Mr. Kozlowski.
Okay, would staff please present their report? Is that Leila?
Yeah, thank you, council president. Actually, the majority of the issues that would be covered in the staff report were addressed at the beginning of the hearing. Council President Kozlowski reviewed the summary of the decisions before the council. So if the council would like me to re-review those, I'm happy to do so. But I did want to take a moment to address one of the comments made with respect to the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendment. Would council like me to review the summary of decisions before the council again, or just address the question related to the comp plan?
Just address the question related to the comp plan. I'm assuming that's all right, Jerry?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. So thank you. We did actually address this in a previous staff report. And past practice and the appropriate procedure to do this would be that if the application is approved by the city council, then at that time, working with the applicant, we would initiate an amendment to the comprehensive plan and the, and the zoning ordinance. That's the process that was gone through with the Classic Street cottages. So we actually need an approval of the plan before we can initiate a comprehensive plan or a zoning ordinance amendment. The findings, I apologize, the recommended conditions of approval require that the applicant shall reserve or dedicate 40% of the site and that this applicant will provide the city with a site plan that includes the percentage location and specific use for the open space and shall be so indicated on plan deed restrictions that will be filed with the city. So upon receipt of that information, there's actually a fee associated with this that the applicant has to pay. And then staff is actually the responsible entity for moving that through the ordinance process, which is, you all well know, we have to post this two weeks in, or a week in advance of the first reading. There's a first reading at a public hearing that's held by city council, and then a second reading the following month, and then it goes into effect 30 days later. So just to confirm that, that there will be a public process to adopt the open space plan, should the application be approved, that it will indeed go through that appropriated process. And certainly, should a council approve the application, you can add that specificity to the findings if you so desire. But that is the process that's required if, if the application is approved. Thank you.
Linda?
Yes.
Can I just ask, can I just ask Mr. Malone to respond to the comments Leila just made regarding the process? She's laid out.
Sure. So I haven't seen a, well, first of all, the, that criterion is a part of this application. Oftentimes, what you would see is sort of a concurrent pathway that would, because, because this sentence is part of a criterion here, it is a criterion for this application. And a condition of approval is necessary because you can't approve this application without the other thing occurring, without the, the, the comprehensive plan amendment. So it's very important if, if, if you're going to, hypothetically, if this is approved, then there has to be a condition of approval that that whole comprehensive plan amendment process will occur because it's really part of this application. It's a criterion at issue here. And you can't approve an application if all criteria are not satisfied. So typically, what we see in these instances is a condition of approval that indicates, you know, a condition of approval just means essentially that the application is not fully approved until they satisfy these particular conditions. One of those conditions being, go get a comprehensive plan amendment, and when you do so, the public has to be, has to participate in that, the public has to be given all its appeal rights and so forth, just in the same way at minimum is being allowed here. Obviously, a comprehensive plan amendment may provide for more, but at minimum, because it's a requirement for this application, it really has to have a condition of approval. Without that condition of approval, assuming you, you know, hypothetically approve it, then it's something that's approved without all criteria being satisfied. Hopefully, that, that makes that clear. Thank you for the question.
I, I think this is the time, actually, Jerry, appropriately, that we can ask the applicant, Orca or staff, questions regarding the application. So take it away.
Okay, I do have questions for all three participants. So I'll start with Mr. Peterson, if I could.
Are you ready, Mr. Peterson? Okay, good. Go ahead, Kerry.
Morning, Mr. Peterson, Jerry Spegman. So I want to talk about the site plan that the planning commission reviewed in some depth on June 16. And I understand that you have attached to your letter of appeal a revised site plan, which is not in the record, and we're not viewing as, as evidence today. But in preparing that revised site plan, you obviously did amend the one that the planning commission discussed. And one of the things that was unclear, listening to the planning commission's proceeding, is how much acreage is accounted for in that narrow strip on the north end, the one that is not included in the revised plan. So I, I, I believe you, I believe that you were asserting a figure north of 44, maybe even 47% as open space in the plan that the commission looked at. How much of that 40-plus percent goes away if you're not relying on the the skinny part of the, of the open space to the north?
Certainly, sure. So thank you for the question. The, if you look at exhibit C to our letter, which is the site plan that the planning commission considered, in the upper right, there's a, a table, and it shows that the dedicated open space and round numbers is 79,000 square feet out of a total of 166,000 square feet. That's 47.6%. Maybe that's an eight, I can't quite tell, but it's roughly 47%. If you look at the alternative site plan in exhibit E, it's not really an alternative site plan. It's basically the same site plan, just with the narrow strip eliminated. narrow strip eliminated. And that takes advantage of that seven point six percent surplus. And Exhibit E is, like I said, the same site plan reduced down to the absolute minimum of forty percent. So that's roughly sixty-six thousand four hundred square feet of open space, again, divided by the overall acre to the square foot into the site, it's at forty percent. So I would posit that Exhibit E is actually not new evidence, it's just an iteration, a re, kind of a revision of the it's a different version of the first one, if the council's uh desire is to eliminate that strip. Um, and at any rate, uh, I believe as um somebody, I can't remember who suggested, is ultimately the council can and should, for that matter, if it's going to go down this route, we're thinking that the forty percent standard is applicable, that it should just impose a condition of approval, requiring the applicant to demonstrate to the staff satisfaction that the open space is forty percent. And it's, you know, I, we didn't introduce it here because this hearing is on the record, but we're perfectly prepared to do that. We can get a surveyor to show you. And that's going to, by the way, address a lot of the comments of some of the public staff members, or some public members about how our site plan really isn't forty percent. We're perfectly willing to accept the condition of approval that we prove to you that the open space is forty percent.
So and when I listen to uh the Planning Commission's deliberations on this, um there was some mention, not a lot, but there was some mention of the uh equally skinny part of the track at the southern end, down near uh Ridge Street or Ridge Drive. Um, obviously, most of the attention was spent on the the northern end, close to the parking lots. But uh I'm pretty familiar with the southern end, um driving past that on a regular basis. It looks to me, if I'm not mistaken, it looks to me like that's a relatively narrow strip and, more importantly, a very slope, a steep slope that comes down essentially from the backyards of five houses, I think, on Ridge Drive. So I assume the property your uh client owns runs basically from those backyard fences down a steep slope to Classic Street. And uh it does widen as you go further along, but certainly at Ridge Drive itself, uh intersection of Ridge Drive and Classic, uh, it's pretty skinny. And so uh I guess I'm curious, I I know there's plans for a uh pedestrian trail or more, probably less a pedestrian trail and more of a uh hiker's trail, uh, given the terrain. But what what specifically is the plan for the the southernmost part of the strip?
Well, first of all, I mean, the site is what it is, right? We can't change the boundaries of the site.
Right.
So we're offering the entirety of the south of the site for its entire width. We obviously can't make it wider, we don't have any more property. Um, as far as what's going to be done with it, um there's no design review applicable to this application, that's expressly excluded from design review. So I would, I would caution the council against getting too far into the weeds on the design details. But I will say that the applicant is more than willing to work with the city to either leave it alone or put in improvements as the parties can agree to maximize the benefit to to the public and to the guests of the hotel. Uh, it doesn't necessarily need to be a walking trail. I, you know, I I meant, I talked in my testimony about how the walking trail was largely in response to the Planning Commission in an effort to satisfy the Planning Commission's concerns. We don't, we're not wed to the walking trail. Um, you know, there is some flat space in this area that I do believe Mr. Sorelli intends to make available as as a ball field or picnic area. Um, but then I would also just kind of move back to my original testimony, which is that your, your question suggests that you're going to do an ad hoc definition of park. And I would posit, as I already have, that any open space is a park. Uh, and so we're kind of getting me down into the weeds of things that are uh not necessarily applicable to this application.
Well, can I just stop you there? Because I understand the density uh standard that we're talking about to to say that uh in order to achieve the ratio you want, uh, you need to dedicate open space as a park or a golf course. It's not three options. You don't get open space, park, or golf course. You get open space as a park or a golf course. So you just said that any open space is a park. Would you say that any open space is a golf course?
No.
Okay. Uh, did you hear in the Planning Commission deliberation uh Commissioner Chris use a definition, I think from Webster's Third International?
Yeah.
That a park is a track uh of land maintained as a place of beauty or recreation?
I'm not going to disagree with you that he did that, though.
It, would that be an objective standard or a subjective standard?
That's clearly an objective standard.
I'm sorry, clearly subjective?
Objective standard, a place of beauty. I mean, what I think is beautiful and you think are beautiful, it can be very different things.
Would you agree with Commissioner Chris that uh courts regularly rely on that definition or that dictionary as a source of definitions?
Certainly, the dictionary is a is a persuasive authority, uh, just like um state statutes in this case are a persuasive authority. They're not controlling. I don't disagree with Mr. uh, Mr. Malone that ultimately it's city's job to interpret its own code, but um there's plenty of persuasive authorities, and in one case at least a controlling authority of the of the Court of Appeals that bear on the subject.
Yeah. So ju, I I just want to make sure I, I think I heard.
I would also add that the the council is limited by those clear and objective statutes that I cited. It's not operating in a completely free environment to interpret the code as it sees fit. It also needs to do so in a manner that's clear and objective.
Okay. So um with respect to that, that narrow slope at the southern end of the of the property, if uh you were ultimately uh going to rely on the uh revised drawing that's in your letter of appeal, you would need every inch of that southern strip to hit forty percent, right?
Uh, well, yes, except, I mean, to the extent that you, if you wanted to the farther south, you move the northern boundary of the open space, the more dependent you become on using the entirety of the site. Right? I mean, if we went with the uh, if we went with the Exhibit C site plan and kept the entire strip along Classic, then you could eliminate some open space at the south end. Right? I mean, there's plenty of room for forty percent of the site to be dedicated as open space. And quite frankly, my plan will put it wherever this city wants it, obviously not subject to the layout of the project itself.
Okay. So um, I understand your position is that uh we're only talking about the forty percent because Mr. Sorelli has agreed uh to to provide it, that uh he's not required to, because you don't uh, you don't see um the project is involving dwelling units. And just want to uh check on a couple of things. So in the Luba decision, Luba clearly calls this a hotel. I understand that, right?
Yes.
Okay. But they, didn't Luba also clearly leave the door open for the potential uh on reman of a finding that the hotel also includes dwelling units? Luba didn't shut the door on us. Luba said.
Of course, if they have, then we wouldn't bury everybody.
Correct. So so it is possible, at least the folks on Luba, on that panel, uh, see the possibility of a hotel and a dwelling unit being uh one and the same thing, right?
Well, what the Luba Commissioner personally believes is not going to be the issue. The issue is going to be uh, is the city's interpretation of its own code entitled to the deference that Mr. Malone referred to. That's going to be the issue.
Right.
And my effort here is to persuade you to not include hotel rooms within the definition of dwelling units. And I've provided with you with a number of authorities that suggest that that is the reasonable way to go.
So uh, and I I I agree that some of your uh arguments are certainly uh intriguing. Um, what about uh the argument that our definition of dwelling units begins, I think, with the words one or more rooms? Um, we don't have any one-room houses in Manzanita, but apparently we can't have a one-room dwelling unit.
Sure, you can have a video apartment.
Um, eh eh, perhaps. What about uh the fact that um you make a uh distinction between dwelling units and uh space for transient lodgers? Um, and in this town, most of our transient lodgers rent short-term rentals. And our short-term rental ordinance clearly defines short-term rentals as dwelling units. So would it be inconsistent for us to say you can have two hundred and fifty dwelling units that are used for short-term uh for for transient lodging in this town? But a hotel can't be a dwelling unit because it's used for transient lodging?
Well, I would make two, two responses to that. First of all, in any short-term rental I've ever stayed in, I've not received the additional services that come with a commercial hotel. Number, and number two, a short-term rental can't, the the physical structure is, in fact, a residence, residential dwelling that could be used by its owner as a long-term resident. And that's not the case of hotel room.
All right, well, I'm sure there's some short-term rental operators out there that would want to uh argue with your first point. As to your second point, I'm only raising it because the ordinance, which talks about short-term rental units, short-term rental uh rental STRs as being dwelling units is well aware that they can be, maybe were, maybe even are, sometimes uh occupied by their owners. Um, but the ordinance is all about the business of being in uh short-term rental or transient lodgers. And so it would seem like if there was a conflict between transient lodging and dwelling units, uh, our ordinance would would not choose to uh call the short-term rentals uh in the very ordinance that sets up the regulatory scheme for short-term rentals, uh, we wouldn't call them dwelling units. But um suffice it to say, the one way or the other, the the Planning Commission uh got to the forty percent calculation. Uh, whether they uh they 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 did make a finding that they are dwelling units, they also made a finding that you, uh, Mr. Sorelli was committed to complying with the forty percent uh opportunity. Um, and your, your argument today is that um there's enough open space available on this land for you to um offer it as a park.
Yes.
And that's because even with some adjustments, you have at least forty percent, not a whole lot more, but at least forty percent. And your position is that any open space is a park?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Jerry, could I just ask a couple of questions along your same track?
You are the presiding officer.
I guess I will, I guess, but so um I I think the exchange was really interesting and uh pretty informative. One of the things that you said, Mr. Peterson, was that a hotel would have a front desk and staffed? Is that going to be the case for the classic cottages? Or not, excuse me, for the, for the uh loss?
Yes, the the hotel would be operated with with staff, and it's been brought up at previous meetings, and that was a a request from both Planning Commission and potentially City Council. And I've stated on the record before that it would be a staffed hotel to assist with any questions on the site and help help control and monitor the property.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Um, i- if we, the the other question about the open space, if we decided that the path was an important component, um, based on your agreement that we, that a path could uh be part of this uh development? Um, is there uh any, one of my concerns about it, I I really like the thought of a path. But one of my concerns, having looked at the site, is that the slope down uh to the side is pretty significant. Is there, are there ways to uh develop a path that would be easily walkable by an average person? I, no bikes can't do it, but by an average person?
I mean, yeah, so, I mean, leading into the property review and pre-op meetings with city, city managers, um, and and purchasing from the previous owner, I know there's been a lot of discussions about access from the Highlands down to the city and um I'm more than willing and and if there's a path to keep it along Classic and dedicate some land on the top to make it all flat from the narrow strip that Mr. Spegman talked about on the on the south end, if that was one continuous path that at least kept pedestrians off the road, I'd be willing to move, shift that walkway up. Um, this path has been a response from the early purchase of the property and and the the request, I mean, the last year and a half to two years, to be quite honest, I haven't been able to talk to city managers, talk to city councils, like it's been a one-track um, application and review process. I haven't had that open discussion to help guide and enhance this project globally with the community, with the property. It's me trying to present something and then either get an approval or a rejection and no discussion about how to make it better. Um, I've stated this before, I think, with the the design of the units, it was originally designed to be in context and in in in, you know, aesthetic harmony with the surrounding context. That's the the reason for the design and how they're pulled apart and scattered on the site. And same with the trail and the open space. I mean, again, this application has always been for a hotel, not for long-term dwelling units. Um, similar, Coast cabins is a prime example of a street that is individual units that are much like dwellings, if that's what you're calling them, but there, it's a hotel. Um, so this is for a hotel, and I'm more than willing to, going back to your question, is work with the council or the city management to adjust that that trail. And if it requires some dedication of land to to stay up on Classic, I know there was some concern with the Classic Street cottages, that there was never that, if you will, like walkway or sidewalk or path on the east side of Classic Street. If it needed to go on the west side and could, I'd be willing to shift it up and and make it more flat like you. I think you just brought up, so.
Okay, so that would be kind of next to the right of way on Classic?
Yeah, on the west side of Classic, yeah.
Um, okay, all right, that answered my question. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to ask some questions of uh Mr. Malone.
Yes.
Hi, Sean, uh, Jerry Spegman. Um, actually, just want to uh, I heard you loud and clear and on the uh open space issue and the dwelling units issue, um I'm more curious about the traffic issue and specifically, if you can point me to anything in either the uh scoping letter from the city's consultant or the um study from the uh applicant's uh traffic engineer that uh you disagree with or that you are particularly uh concerned about, that I should that I should be particularly concerned about?
Well, I think the issue of three hundred, the maximum peak vehicle trips on a particular day uh is up to three hundred and nine. I think that's uh, you know, the the provision that you're dealing with in the in the Manzanita zoning ordinance is, does not ask for a level of service or or um uh, you know, something specifically tied to a uh, you know, a a particular level, I guess I'll just say. But if you, I mean, in in the Greenlight Engineering uh report, sort of relied on what the applicant set forward in terms of whether the in terms of whether the transportation would be significant, so to speak. And I think that's where the, you know, again, the Planning Commission or the City Council's findings previously were just sort of contingent upon an error saying, instead of up to 309 vehicle trips on a particular day, more than 309 vehicle trips. And so I think the City Council can
You're not, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you're not saying that if that error had not been made, Luba clearly would have ruled in your favor on that issue, are you?
I'm saying Luba ruled against the issue because of that basic error. So, I mean, we can't really know, had that error not been made, whether Luba would have upheld it. Again, there's evidence in the record that there are up to 309 vehicle trips on a particular day. And if the City Council wants to rely on up to 309 vehicle trips per day instead of more than, which is clearly an error, then, you know, Luba hasn't spoken to that issue yet. So you know, Luba could have in some sort of advisory or dicta that that wouldn't be allowed, but they didn't do that. You know, it's not a, the applicant's counsel cites to level of service and things along those lines, but that's not what the provision we're talking about requires. It requires something a little bit more subjective. And again, I don't think this argument about clear and objective criteria that was again just raised, that's been waived. So I think that if that's the issue that was sort of identified previously as the basis for finding that standard wasn't met, the reason that Luba remanded that was because it was off. It was just a, it seems like a typo. And if the City Council wanted to test the waters with that again, given that amount of traffic, then I think the City Council could do so and has that opportunity.
And do you have any specific issues with either the traffic engineer study from the applicant submitted in this round or the scoping letter from the city's consultant?
No, I mean, I, you know, again, it's not something that points out an error. I'm not a traffic engineer myself. You know, the Greenlight Engineering recognized, did testify before the Planning Commission, so I would defer to what he said. But I think the, again, the issue that was the focus of the prior decision is not invalidated as long as it's done so correctly and focused on that up to 309 instead of what was clearly a typo or an error of more than 309 vehicle trips per day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Linda, you're on mute if you're talking to us?
I got it. It used to get back on verbal point. So Sean, on the, I believe you talked about one of the remand issues was that there wasn't information regarding trips downtown to the downtown area. Is that correct?
Correct. That was, and I apologize if I didn't fully answer that for Counselor Spigman. There were two components of that, of the findings related to traffic in the Luba decision. One was the basic error that I just identified. And the other one was that the findings in that particular decision by the City Council, which I think was incorporating the Planning Commission's decision, was related. There were findings that, let me just find that again. There was a finding in that decision that many of these trips would be directed to downtown. Now, you know, how that relates to that particular provision is within the City Council's purview to interpret, but the city, Luba basically said that there wasn't evidence of how these trips were directed downtown. And if the City Council is going to adopt that sort of finding again, then the City Council should explain how that how the traffic is directed downtown. And Luba found that there was no evidence to support that because you know, there was no, there didn't seem to be any findings associated with how that is directed downtown.
Okay. And was that included in the scoping letter from our, the city's engineer? Do you know?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure that in this round, before the Planning Commission, I can't specifically say, but at the very least, it was included. It may have been included in something related to scoping in the prior.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I have some questions for staff. I guess primarily Leila, perhaps Scott, if that's all right? Hello? So Leila or Scott, what I'm most curious about is in the staff report, you tell us that if we are to approve this application, we could do it with conditions of approval and you list, I believe, 15 of them. They're lettered A through O. And because of where we're at in the process, this council, shorthanded as it is, is going to have to understand those 15 conditions in a hurry if we are to approve this with those conditions. Some of them seem pretty straightforward, maybe even self-executing. Others seem a little more complicated. And I guess, I mean, obviously, I think the Planning Commission in an optimal situation is far better suited than a City Council to wrestle with the questions embedded in those 15 conditions. So I guess what I'm really curious about is just in general, not in this case, but in general, tell me how conditions work, not in terms of how they are attached to an approval, but after the fact, what kind of oversight, what kind of process, what kind of involvement does the Planning Commission have? It seems like the Planning Commission is mentioned explicitly in a few of them. Obviously, the big one we're talking about here is F, the one that deals with reserving the 40% for a private park. How would the, what would the Planning Commission's role be if, in any case, where there's an approval with substantial conditions attached to it? What does the Planning Commission do after after the approval is granted?
Well, generally speaking, the findings are written such that staff is actually the responsible entity for implementing the findings. So and this happens with Planning Commission decisions generally, as they articulate a desire. So sometimes they'll amend the findings. And I will note that in this application, it's been amended a number of times based on feedback from the Planning Commission over the last year or so. So the one sort of tool we have is the issuance of building permits. So it's incumbent on staff when an applicant comes in to get a building permit that we confirm that all of the conditions of approval have been met. So Planning Commission doesn't take a role in any of these unless there's a substantive change to the design or something that requires an additional decision of the Planning Commission. So building permits do not get issued until all of the conditions within the land use approval are met.
So in this case, there's going to be a lot of building permits presumably if this happens, right? So.
Yeah, I think it depends on how they phase their construction. And Scott can probably speak more to the details on this. But if they come in with one building permit package for the entire thing, before the first permit is issued, all of the conditions have to be met. So nothing gets issued until it's met.
And you're saying in general, the decision to issue the building permit is Scott's or yourself, the city manager. It's not the Planning Commission. Well, I wouldn't expect it to be the Planning Commission directly, but does the Planning Commission have any opportunity to weigh in before the issuance in a case like this?
No, their weighing in comes, the process is set up so that their findings and conditions of approval, that's the moment in which either the Planning Commission or in this case, City Council defines the terms of the issuance of those permits. So unless, again, there's a substantive change, so if the applicant gets down into the engineering and finds out that they've got to move a few things around and there's, it's substantive enough that it requires a new review, then Planning Commission review it. But otherwise, it's on the implementation side of the process. And so that falls to staff.
So you've been in the business for a while in planning. The Planning Commission, for reasons I completely understand, elected not to weigh in on these 15 conditions. But we now would have to if we were to approve. How's that set with you as planner? The Planning Commission punting with good reason to the city, to a shorthanded City Council at this point? Do you have any concerns about that?
Well, I don't, largely because I think that the findings that, I mean, it's a big lift for all of you. But the findings do, I think, reflect about a year's worth of effort, both on the part of the Planning Commission. So many of the comments that were made during deliberations, staff revised the staff report multiple times to address issues that were brought up during the Planning Commission process. That's effectively a big part of our job when we go through a hearing, is that we're responsible for kind of interpreting what is being said. And then ultimately, the chair reviews that. And if there's issues with it, they're raised at that time. So I think in this respect, I do think it would be prudent for council to really take a hard look at those findings. Should you elect to approve the application, certainly communicating any additional conditions would be entirely appropriate. But there is a measure of sort of relying on staff to ensure that the findings are addressing the issues that have been raised. So I feel confident in that. And I feel confident in the council's ability to articulate any additional or changes to the findings, should you elect to do so.
So in it, I'm sorry, in at least one respect, there would be some more public process essentially, the issue that you and Mr. Malone exchanged on a little bit ago, right?
Yes. So, and I would concur with Mr. Malone. I think I did say it myself, that you should make it a condition of approval. And that way it's documented. We would do it either way, but I agree that having it documented, particularly in this case, is prudent. And then yes, there would be a public hearing process as as required by our charter and our rules, that we have two readings of the ordinance before it's adopted. So there would be a public hearing.
Right. Linda, I'm going to ask one more question, Linda, before you take over. So when I was talking with Mr. Peterson and Mr. Sorelli, no, actually, I think it was when Linda was talking with Vito, it sounded like he was expressing a lot of frustration with the confines of the process that we've been locked in for the last couple of years now. The Planning Commission to the City Council, to Luba, back to the City Council, from us back to the Planning Commission, now up to City Council. And it sounds like Mr. Sorelli was saying that process has not enabled him to have as full a conversation about some of the ways he might be able to address some of the community concerns. And I know the community, in many cases, have said they don't sense Mr. Sorelli has been at all responsive to their concerns. So it's at least possible that you've got two different parties. Both would like to try to figure things out, but the process we're stuck in is not ideally suited for that. So I'm just, I'm curious if you have any response to that. I know you've been working with Mr. Sorelli since before the beginning of all of this. Has the very process that we are engaged in been detrimental to people coming together on some of the issues that have been well articulated on both sides?
Yeah, I would concur with that, largely because the process has been limited to the issues once it went to Luba on remand. And also to keep the process pure and fair, staff has worked with Mr. Sorelli to the extent that we were able to. But yeah, I would agree that it certainly provides some limitations to the extent to which staff can and should engage with the applicant. I will say that conditions of approval provide additional flexibility. So should the application be approved and there's a condition, say, to coordinate around a pathway, that once the decision has been made, that makes it a lot easier for us to have that conversation. But when we're in a remand process and we're being asked to stick within the existing evidentiary record, we certainly want to make sure that the process stays pure, as I said. And so that certainly does put limitations on the extent to which staff could engage with the applicant.
So, thank you.
I think that last question was really important. That was a question also I had on my mind. The other question, I fear I'm not as confident as you are, Leila, in the council's ability to go through the findings in a way that would be consistent with the scrutiny the Planning Commission seasoned in the issues would have. But given that, do, if, for instance, this was accepted and we needed to go through the findings, would that occur? Would we have time to make that happen, I guess is the question?
Yeah, so I think that's probably one of the advantages to having a bit of air to breathe between now and Friday. So that would be your time to really look hard at those findings and then give direction to staff. But we have to have a written decision by August 4th. So we would need to be able to do that. And we can figure out a process for review if needed to do that.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question for Savani. She's, oh, yeah, she's still here. Savani, there's been discussion about altering the design of the open space that would be a park. Is that, can we do that? Is that legally permissible based on the fact that those deviations hadn't been discussed before?
So there's really two questions here. The first question, which is the question on the record, that you would need to determine before you made a determination about the kind of site plan, what you want it to look like, what the applicant's willing to agree to. That first question on the record is, is there information in the record that the applicant can in some way have 40% of the total project dedicated to the open space, whether it's as a park or as open space, whatever the council's determination is? If you can determine that on the record, then as Leila was talking about, there's flexibility in the conditions and up to what the applicant is willing to agree to about what that might look like. So if the council was interested in keeping the path as proposed below, then it could accept that.
accept that as a condition of approval or require that as a condition of approval. But that first question would have to be determined on the record is whether it's possible for there to be forty percent of the lot dedicated. And as an example, so for instance, if you had an application before you where seventy-five percent of the lot was taken up by buildings or parking lots or other things that you wouldn't consider a park or open space, then it wouldn't be possible to meet that condition.
Ah, okay, okay.
So Savani, if I can just elaborate on that. So on the record, in the evidence, we've got a drawing that is reports to be forty-seven percent open space. And the planning commission clearly did not accept all of that as viable park. Are you saying that theoretically, we could make a finding that not that that drawing complies with the density standard, but that that drawing makes it possible for us to make a finding that it is that they can comply with the forty percent rule? Assuming adjustments made as a condition of, assuming adjustments to that drawing made as a condition of approval?
Yes.
Okay.
So for example, that drawing doesn't show that seventy-five percent of the lot is taken up by buildings that could not possibly be open space.
Correct.
And of course, that factual determination is your determination, whether or not it is possible. But yes, that is a, that is a finding you could make.
Right.
Okay, Jerry, are there any additional, do you have any additional questions?
Not yet, or not as at this point.
Okay, okay. Are there any persons in the audience who wish to speak in favor of the proposed development? Nancy, do we see any hands?
No hands.
Okay. Are there comments from the public in opposition to the development? And I just want to remind the public of the, the statement we made before. If you've sent a letter in, it's on the record. If someone espouses your point is perfectly appropriate to say that you agree with, with the speaker before you. And if at all possible, it would be great to limit it to the issues before us. So are there any questions in opposition to the development? Nancy?
Um, there's a few hands, just a moment. Okay, Bill, go ahead. Bill Guntenberger, I'm sorry if I pronounced your name wrong, but go, go, go ahead.
Hi, this is Bill Guntenberger, six, ten Division Court. Jerry's begging to answer your question about if they remove that skinny little part of the walkway, how much space is that? It's eight hundred and thirty feet long or sixteen thousand, six hundred square feet. You take that away from his seventy-nine thousand original square feet that he was declaring, he's only got sixty-two thousand, four hundred. He's somewhere four thousand square feet short. I've submitted multiple letters and I'm using the documentation that the applicant has provided. Where he's given footage on his original map or that, the layout that he's now changed to exhibit E. Where he lists the actual footages of the length of the property. He puts forty-six thousand some square feet of what I called his area B. And then he removed seventeen thousand square feet where he put his, I think he calls them micro cabins. In all, if you look at what he's now proposing, which it seems like you can, you can now look at his exhibit E. He now has, according to my calculations, and by the way, these all come from the Toma County tax maps, which are their maps. And if you look at those maps, by the way, Classic Street is supposed to be forty feet wide. Barely thirty feet wide. And how you're going to get a walkway up there on the west side that Vito would like to have without increasing the support of the roadway? Which I don't know if the city can afford to do that. I don't know how you're going to get a walkway up to the level plane of Classic Street. And if you put it down below, you can't be right up against underneath the roadway because it's going to fall on top of you eventually. That's a whole nother issue. I just want to talk about the forty percent. I've put a number of letters together with this. With you take his new exhibit E, he's come up with, he's still short, he's short twelve thousand, five hundred and eighteen square feet, according to my calculations, which means he's only got thirty-two point five percent, not forty percent. If you see my letter of July twenty-first that I submitted, and I think you all got copies of it, you can see my calculations and where I'm coming up with the numbers. He just continually just puts up numbers and says it's this percentage or that percentage. And he is, he has no survey to support his calculations. He gives no numbers to support anything other than, this is what I say it is. He continually uses open space, parks or golf courses. It's not, it's open space as parks or golf course.
Yeah, first of all, thank you. You have spent a lot of time and sent us significant data. So we really appreciate your input. Thank you. And we have received those letters and clearly have read them all.
All right, Ivana.
I have one other comment. I just have one other comment.
Okay, you, you have two more minutes left, Bill.
Okay. My other comment is, no one has refuted any of the documentation that I've given. Has anyone been able to come up with anything other than what I've come up with? Have you seen anything from anyone supporting any other numbers? I yield, I yield back.
Thanks, Bill. Ivana?
Hi, my name is Ivana Obino, and I'm a full-time resident of Manzanita. And I'm sure you guys know how I feel about this project. Just listening to all of you guys talk, I just want to bring up something. I strongly disapprove of you guys approving with conditions. And I say that because I think the applicant has lost trust of the community with his designation of the forty percent. He keeps playing with numbers. This is like the third reiteration of his site plan with the forty percent. And I was doing my own math, my own calculations, and I got even less than Bill did. I, I think the fact that he toys with us and, you know, throws us the, that narrow strip of land that abuts the fill, and someone else owns that land. How can you make the land in front of what someone else owns a park? And why would a strip be a park? It's like a joke. I think he's just adding up numbers to give the forty percent. And because we have this incredible distrust now, because reiteration after reiteration of these plans, we're playing math games to his advantage to make us look like fools. I strongly think it's such a bad idea for the city council to approve it on conditions, because then the public loses all control. Yeah, it may come up for, you know, whatever you said, it comes up and there's, the public is allowed to talk about it, but you have already approved it, and that puts us at a disadvantage. So I, please do not do that. I also, the traffic, I'm so confused. If you're making, if you're coming, and I would love for the applicant to respond to this. If you're coming out of the hotel and you're going left on Dorcas, how does anybody on Classic Street see you? If someone on Classic either going south and turning right or going north and turning left, how are they going to see someone turning left a couple of feet away from the stop sign going left as well? This is, it's such a mess. And and if he decides to make it right turn only, then we need to see the impact on Classic and Lanita. Because if all the traffic now is diverted to Classic and Lanita, that's going to become a mess. There's no walkway there. If you've ever been there during Farmer's Market, a new city hall is going to be built there. That area is going to be so incredibly congested, you're probably going to need streetlights. I, and that's another addition to the city having to pay more for this boondoggle of a, of a application. My feeling is to take this back to ground zero, deny this, have the applicant just redo your application and do it correctly. Now do it. Now, when you redo your application, go through all those things, get all those approvals that you need. Do all that from the get-go. Don't get approved first and then go back. And then we have to hope you're going to do it correctly. We're going to have to hope that someone is overlooking all of that. The city is the people, and the people have overwhelmingly do not want this happening. And the only way to make us trust what's going on is to redo the application. I, I want to thank the planning commission, who are all volunteers for their decision to deny this project. They were diligent and thoughtful. They had the choice to approve with conditions, and they sought not to. And I think the decision was correct. And also, I would like to thank the citizens of Manzanita. I know this nine o'clock start time and how long it's taking, a lot of working people couldn't join us today. But I just want to continue to thank the citizens for their generous and continuous outpouring of support against the building of this largest hotel in Manzanita in a hundred percent residential community. And I also resent the fact that Mr. Stevenson, I think that's his name, the lawyer, keeps talking about Classic Street. I live on Classic Street. I don't know, I, so maybe it was done wrong, but back then, nobody was oversighting anything. I didn't realize, I don't think people realized that the citizens had the power to oversight what was being done and then find inconsistencies and wrongdoing. Now that we know, just because someone else did it wrong, doesn't make it right to continue the wrongness. Like, in whose world is that okay? So, so stop pointing to Classic Street and saying, he did it wrong, so that allows me to do it wrong. I'm sorry, that is not a good argument. Anyway, I just want to reiterate the fact that please do not approve it with conditions of approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ivana. I really appreciate your input, and I totally agree with you. I think the the input of the citizens has been significant and important, really important, and will be considered as we move forward. We do have our traffic engineer here, and I'm wondering if he would have, if he could respond to some of the issues that Ivana brought up.
Hi, this is Todd Mobley with Lancaster Mobley. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Just process wise, I'm not sure if it's best to, to take more opposition and talk about those issues all at once. The applicant will have a chance for rebuttal as well. Would you rather do that, or would you like me to address some of those issues?
Well, why don't, that, that's a good point, Todd. Why don't we wait until the applicant responds, and then if there's additional information, please step in.
Okay, very good. I'm available if you have other questions as well.
Okay, thank you. Nancy?
Yes, we have one more hand. Sandy Wood, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Sandy Wood. Can you hear me?
We can.
I want to agree with Bill and very much with Ivana. I also have a question. A thousand square foot building is a dwelling. It is bigger than many of the homes in Manzanita. And they are all considered homes, whether they're full-time, whether they're second homeowners, whether they're FPRs. I also agree with Sean Malone with the revised site plan is a moving target. I called it a kaleidoscope. We are getting different details and different changes every time we turn around, and nothing is actually real. We don't have what is actually designed. Let's revise this path, or we'll call it something else, or we'll do this. And he said, Vito said that there would be staff at the, and it would be a hotel. Does that mean there's going to be somebody there twenty-four hours a day providing the services of a hotel? Or is it a, gee, we'll have somebody there from two to six to check people in, and then they'll go away and come back. We have a small police force. They cannot afford to spend their time controlling the parties. The problems of whatever it happens to be, it's increasing the density by twice. And it is, no matter what it is called, whether it's dwellings or a hotel, it is in reality thirty-four short-term rental units. Whether they're there for a day or a week or a month or whatever, makes no difference. It is in and out and in and out and housekeepers and more traffic and less consideration of the neighborhood surrounding, which have all made HOAs and denied short-term rentals. So it is violating the neighborhood, et cetera. Thank you to Sean Malone for testifying. Thank you, Ivana. Thank you for the traffic engineer. We did have a traffic engineer also with the concerned citizens. And there is a lot of traffic and nobody's talking about the pedestrians, the pedestrians with dogs. The fact that they runs, the traffic runs the stop signs. And on the way to the state park, you have big vehicles pulling thirty-foot trailers. This is not casual for passenger vehicle coming into a hotel. This is major roads. And it is just not a good place or a good plan, and I'm very much opposed to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
All right, Jim Miller, you're next.
Hi, I wrote a letter concerning the maximum amount of dwellings allowed on the property. And you have that letter. I just want to hear a discussion about whether I'm right or wrong. So if you could apply, could do that during the meeting, I would appreciate. Thank you.
Jim, would you be more specific about the issue? Not all people have seen your letter. So to be clear, could you be able, could you be specific about your question?
Okay, I'll read what I have here. I do not believe it was the intent of the ordinance to use the gross acreage in the calculation of how many dwellings are allowed clustered on the sixty, sixty percent portion of the site, not used as a park. The point of the ordinance is to limit the density of the dwellings in the area where they are actually located, so there is a reasonable distance between the dwellings. Including the forty percent space as a park in the calculation is not logical since no dwellings will be located in the park area. Using the gross acreage in the calculation would put an enormous amount of dwellings on one portion of the site and would violate the intent of the ordinance to limit it to thirteen dwellings per acre. For example, the applicant's attorney's calculation calculates forty-nine dwellings are allowed by using the gross acreage of three point eight three acres at thirteen dwellings per acre. Per the ordinance, the forty-nine dwellings must be clustered on one portion of the site and must achieve a maximum density of thirteen dwellings per acre. That one portion is sixty percent of the total acreage per the ordinance. Using these two requirements calculates to having twenty-one dwellings per acre on that portion, on that one portion, but the ordinance only allows thirteen dwellings per acre. This violates the ordinance. The only way to not violate the ordinance is to use only sixty percent of the gross acreage to determine the total dwellings allowed on that one portion of the site. That number would be twenty-nine dwellings for this application. Thirty-four dwellings is more than that allowed per the ordinance. The only time the gross acreage is allowed is when six point five dwellings per acre is used to calculate the number of dwellings allowed on the entire, on the entire site. That number would be twenty-four dwellings on three point eight four acres. It doesn't matter how the, how the ordinance was interpreted in Classic Street cottages. It was wrongly interpreted then, and that error must not be perpetuated for this application, for all the applications that follow. That's my comment.
I'm not sure that Scott can answer that. I'm not sure that uh Scott can answer that at this point. Leila?
If it's with respect to whether or not to use gross or net density, is that the underlying question here? So our interpretation of the ordinance, my past experience with other ordinances is that it is the gross acreage. And the intent of that is to encourage clustering and leaving as much open space as possible. So if you netted it out, you'd be left with very little, it would actually be um counter to the goal of establishing more open space. Um, so, because no one would elect to do it. Um, so the intent is, and the staff has interpreted, and again, in my experience, gross acreage.
Thank you.
All right, Sean Danaher, you're next.
Hi, I'm not Sean, I'm Mika Russo, I'm his partner, but Sean is here too and we feel the same way. We both are residents, full time residents of Manzanita. And we live directly across from the proposed site for the Manzanita Lofts. We moved here about a year ago, just when this process was kind of in the middle of the first uh version of seeing uh Sorelli's plans and going through what this would mean to the community, to the pedestrians, to the traffic. And we have seen this process um continue over the last year with the both last year, the planning commission denying the application. The city council denying the application, obviously going back to Luba and again, planning commission denied it again this year. Um, and now we are back meeting with you, you all of the city council. And so it's been a long process, it's been a lot to um watch as residents, but also community members and young community members. I think both Sean and I um understand, you know, the desire for people to come out and visit Manzanita. I think what we both really have a problem with is um the way that this proposal has gone through over the last year to the points that many of um the community members have made and even some of the city council members have made. There has not been um much change uh and much responsiveness from the applicant to community members' concerns. It's always been proposed as thirty four units. There's not been any budging um or shifting considering how um they could find a more congruent or appropriate way to offer um housing and um hotel stays that would be more harmonious with the community. And really what I just want to mention today and, and basically kind of lean on is that we've been through this before. The planning commission has received hundreds and hundreds of letters from the community. We've sent letters, we've sent documents and understandings of what the proposal looks like and um the impact of traffic on the area and the questioning that everyone has mentioned of the forty percent. And nothing in the plan and proposal has changed. Or to Ivana's point, it has changed, but it's not changed in writing. So um Vito's architectural plans are lacking so deeply. We said last, at the last meeting, it wouldn't, his two page reports or proposals of what the um hotel rooms would look like would not pass an architecture one O one class because they lacked so much information. That's truly why we're here today and why there is so many questions, both from Luba, but also from the planning commission. And we can't all in good faith approve this because there's just not enough information. And it's really been put on the shoulders of the planning commission and the city council to fill in those gaps. That's why we're talking about um amendments or building in, you know, things to, if we approve it, then there's wanting to include more information and, and make sure that he follows um uh requirements that the city would want. And that, the only reason y'all are having to do that is because he didn't do the work over the last year and a half to develop and, and create a more robust plan that um provides details for us as a community to trust and for the planning commission to approve. And so I just specifically wanted to point out um in their letter and um I forget the word, but in their counter to the planning commission's decisions. They said that the planning commission erred when um choosing, when deciding that they did not meet the forty percent. They have also said, Vito also has said that, and this was stated earlier in the conversation today, that they were limited by the processes um that this uh they were limited by the structures of this process to what Leila spoke about, you know, needing to follow the um rules that Luba set in place and only speak about um what was sent back to us. And I think that what is really frustrating as a community member is when I hear that I, I, we know the background um and the lack of work that was put into it. I don't believe for a second that Vito and his team and the lawyers and this massive group of people that he's working with, all the talent in the room. I don't believe that they could possibly have been limited by the process because they never showed up with new material to help the community be on their side. Nothing changed in the way that they presented their findings. It was on the community members to ask questions and to poke holes in, in the gaps of information.
That's your five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. And thank you for the comment.
Yeah, of course.
Are there any other uh comments? Any other raised hands?
No, no other raised hands.
Okay, uh, well, now I think it's time to turn to the applicant for a response to any points raised by members of the audience and the response is limited to ten minutes.
Thank you very much. So I, I just know a number of items to cover on my rebuttal. First of all, with respect to what constitutes the record, which are issues raised by Mr. Malone. I talked about this a little bit with Mr. Spagman in our back and forth on some questions. Uh, the dictionary and state statutes are not evidence, they're not facts, they're legal authorities. So they're not excluded from discussion during and on the record review. Um, as I mentioned, uh, I find them to be persuasive authorities. I have never made a suggestion that they're controlling. You know, I, but I think they're nonetheless helpful in the city council, for the city council to help uh come up with a workable interpretation of its own definition. Um, I would argue that perhaps the court of appeals case is controlling. And it does expressly conclude, albeit in a different context, but one that's certainly analogous here. Uh, that hotels and dwelling units are different things. Similarly, uh with respect to the question of parks, um, Mr. Malone uh didn't participate in the planning commission hearings below. So he may have missed it, but the other parks that I've talked about as examples, state parks, Forest Park, Mills and the Lands Park, those were all discussed before the planning commission. So they are part of the record, uh, the citation to them, the um analogy to them is part of the record, as previously been part of my argument. Similarly, the Classic Street Cottage's open space plan, that is in the city's code itself. Given that Classic Street Cottage is a um planned, planned development with its own chapter of the code. Uh, so I would refer the, would refer the council to its own code, the chapter for the Classic Street Cottage's planned development. So by virtue of being part of the code, it is also legal authority and not evidence. With respect to our arguments about the applicability of the statutes that require clear and objective standards to be applied to decisions affecting housing. Until the planning commission's most recent decision, there has never been a finding in this case that hotel rooms are in fact dwelling. If you go back and look at the uh city council's original decision and the basis for remand for Luba, the problem was that the city never actually made a finding. It merely said that they could be dwelling units, but never concluded that they were. Uh, so this is our first opportunity to actually respond to a finding that hotel rooms are dwelling in it. And we've raised that argument and it's an appropriate argument to be made at this time, given that uh there was no finding previously to which it could be raised. With respect to conditions of approval, the applicant will not oppose a condition of approval along the lines of the discussion that the council has had to tweak or fine tune the open space. Um, I think there was a long discussion about that with staff and we're fully in support of the approach whereby that if the council can make a finding that a forty percent open space dedication or reservation is possible, that the parties work together to find something that meets everybody's needs, we're certainly fine with that. We're also not going to oppose any condition of approval that requires subsequent um map amendments uh along the lines of the testimony from Mr. Malone and the response from Ms. Amy. Um, I do want to address the comments of Ms. Danaher that we just heard. First of all, um, she did not speak to any applicable approval criteria at any time in her testimony. She wants to see more detail for the design of these projects, of this project, but I would reiterate that there is no design review. That's a feature of your code. So, you know, the, the particular style of the hotel rooms beyond the conceptual renderings is really not required or under review here. Uh, but in fact, the, the, the series of events are exactly contrary to how she described them. Uh, Mr. Sorelli, as he testified previously, has really tried to engage in an iterative process here to get to a uh, a design and a project layout that um satisfies the city and the applicant as best they can. Um, but he's been stymied somewhat by the inherent limitations of the process. So to suggest that he has been recalcitrant about providing information, I would say exactly the opposite is true. Uh, I'm, for the remainder of our rebuttal, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Aaron to talk about uh the traffic issues and the um the testimony of Mr. Malone.
Uh, thank you. Uh, for the record, Brent Aaron, traffic engineer with Mackenzie. So, uh, Mr. Malone focused on the Luba issue, the, the three hundred and nine uh trip question and uh also Greenlight's original letter. But those have been addressed with the full traffic analysis that we provided after the uh, the Luba appeal, uh, or at least their decision. So, uh, interestingly, Greenlight did not testify in response to the TIA findings, so the traffic study findings, uh, which have been confirmed by the city's consultant Lancaster Mobley. And I, I just realized a moment ago that, that you neglected to have Mr. Mobley respond to any questions and perhaps you can ask him questions and he can confirm what I'm saying during your deliberations. But the point of Luba response was to get the data right and determine if it overloads the, the city streets. So that's the criteria, right? The updated traffic study shows two hundred and seventy four Saturday and ninety four weekday trips. Okay, that's what's in the record. Uh, the traffic study also noted about twenty percent of vehicle trips would travel to the west towards downtown on Dorcas or Lanida during peak hours and lots. The weekday PM uh and the Saturday midday. So Lancaster Mobley noted in their review of the traffic analysis, and I quote, "Also with relatively low trip generation of the project, minor changes in trip distribution percentages do not result in significant traffic volume changes. The assumptions in the traffic study are reasonable and no revisions are necessary." In other words, you know, we can argue all day about how many trips are going to go or what percentage of trips might go downtown from this site. But the point he's making here is it really doesn't matter, it's a low impact and it's not going to cause the streets to be overloaded. Now, the city has no objective standard for determining what overloading is. But if we use a level service criteria based on vehicle delay that's accepted by the industry, uh, generally a level of service D, delta D is acceptable in most jurisdictions. And as we've shown in the traffic study, all intersections operate at a B, Bravo, or better. Right? So to make a finding that the streets are overloaded, uh, there is no evidence in the record that would show that. We've also addressed uh sitelessness, somebody brought that up, and operation of the classic Dorcas intersection, the Qing operation. And I would note too that, that, you know, there are questions about running the, the stop signs on Classic. That's an enforcement issue and, and, you know, there may be some questions as to whether or not it should be in all the stuff, but that's, that's all a completely different question. So, um, that was all I, I have, happy to answer any questions you might have too.
And then just the last point we would make is, uh, as you already know, Mr. Mobley is available. I would strongly recommend that you consult with your own traffic consultant on these issues. I mean, to the extent you think there's a he said, she said here, I think he's probably the best arbiter, I mean, that's why you hired him. So hopefully, uh, you'll have some, some probing questions for Mr. Mobley. Uh, unless there are any questions from the board, um, that will conclude our rebuttal. Thank you.
Okay, I will now close the public comment portion of this discussion and will invite discussion by the city council members, Jerry Spagman or Linda Kozlowski uh to ask questions of the applicant, audience members or staff. But we are now to the point where the discussion will be limited to council only. And I would ask Scott uh to have available the most recent map uh in the record if we need it uh to look at.
Uh, I'm ready to share that whenever. And let me clarify, is that the exhibit in the uh appeal letter? I believe exhibit C or D.
I think C, uh, I'm not sure. I think C was uh part of the record, I think D is not.
Okay, okay. Just let me know when you're ready for that.
Okay, if, if we need it, that's great. I, I do have a question for uh Leila or uh, for our traffic engineer. Can you talk a little bit about the scope of the traffic study and what the issues, what we ask? The uh what, 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 what we wanted to know in terms of the traffic study and did, did it include pedestrian traffic, bike traffic? Uh, the direction of, to, to Ivana's point, the, the direction uh allowable turning radius, those kinds of things.
I'll let Todd answer the specifics, but what I can give you generally is the direction that the city gave Todd uh to draft a scope. And so the city wanted to be as rigorous as possible with the traffic impact study. So we actually relied both on Mr. Mobley's expertise but to the critique uh that was provided by the concerned citizens of Manzanita. So in that letter that was submitted to the planning commission, they outlined a significant number of issues. And so staff uh made the determination that in order to provide the planning commission and the decision makers with the best information possible, that we needed to address every issue that was raised in that letter. So that was the uh basis for which we asked Mr. Mobley to develop a scope of work. And then he um developed that again with his own expertise uh to help us uh establish a rigorous assessment of, of the traffic impacts. Uh, so I'll conclude there and hand it over to Mr. Mobley to address the other questions that were raised. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, that's true. The, the traffic impact study in its current form um was really largely in response to the Luba remand and the issues that were raised um um during the, the first planning commission hearing and then the appeal to council. So the scoping memo, I believe it's in the record, but it includes trip generation and distribution. So to that point, the issue about how much traffic is directed toward downtown, that was, that was a question that wasn't answered prior to the traffic study, but the traffic study did address that. Um, we identified a project study area that includes three intersections plus the site access. Uh, we looked, we asked for operational things around the site access relative to site distance, the ability to safely get in and out of the site. The influence of the Dorcas and, and classic intersection that's nearby, that was also included in the, in the traffic study. Um, we required addition of trips from other projects that are approved but not constructed. And then, yeah, just inclusion of the issues that were raised by the opposition and in the Luba decision. So that's kind of the, that's how we arrived at the scope for the traffic impact study.
So in that study, did you uh, is part of that study taking into consideration pedestrian and bike travel on Classic?
Pedestrian and bike traffic um is reflected in the traffic count data. There's really not um kind of threshold information or like level of service we have for intersection operation and vehicle traffic. We don't really have a similar metric for pedestrians and bikes, but as far as safety of the roadway goes. And then that data is collected in the traffic count. So to that extent, it's, it's addressed in the traffic impact study.
And then in terms of the traffic and the direction of traffic, the, again, to Ivana's question about right hand at Dorcas or left hand, the impact of that, was any of that, was any of that in the scope of the traffic setting?
It was, yes. Part of the operation of the driveway, it's, it's important to note that the Dorcas and Classic intersection is always stopped. So vehicles leaving that intersection will be coming from a stop, so speeds are slow, which allows that the necessary site distance to be a bit lower. The applicant looked at traffic queues from the stop signs and if that would interfere with the driveway operation. They showed that it would, it would, it would work. The queues would not affect the operation of the driveway and the visibility was acceptable and we, we agreed with those findings.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, do you have any questions about the traffic study?
No.
Okay. Was that a yes?
No, it's, I have no questions.
Okay, okay. All right. Any questions about the open space slash park?
Yeah, I, I guess I have a question, probably best directed at Savani. It seems to me that there are both a qualitative aspect to this question and a quantitative. The quantitative is, there's plenty of evidence in the record, including the arguments offered by Bill Guppenberger and certainly Mr. Peterson. And I, I think that, you know, with a good calculator, I can, I can make sense of those numbers. The qualitative question of what is a park and does this proposed open space equal a park? Was not fully developed in the record of the planning commission with regard to the southernmost strip. I think it was pretty well developed on the northernmost strip. And so depending on how the math works out, it's just gonna, it's gonna put us in a, a position where perhaps we're unable to conclude that the forty percent standard is met because there is a a couple of relatively straightforward questions that could be answered after an evidentiary hearing, but we don't have that opportunity. So anything you can tell me, Savani, that can clarify my thinking on how to handle the qualitative part of the analysis?
You want to make?
Would be appreciated.
So I think as an initial matter, the council is going to have to make its own determination about what is the definition of a park. There isn't, there isn't guidance in the code. It's not bound by the analysis that the planning commission went through. That, that's really something that the council needs to decide on the record before it, based on the arguments that the parties have provided today about what, what does a park mean and whether the space proposed can meet that definition. So that's one aspect. And I do want to clarify on the, the can meet that definition piece of it. Because again, this is an area where the council has some flexibility and as the applicant indicated today, they're willing to, they may be willing if the use were approved to make certain changes that would make it, that would satisfy the council. So those are, if there are certain aspects of the the property that are concerning, or there are certain aspects of this proposal as it exists in the record that are not satisfactory, but that could be changed with conditions, then that is something to consider. So there's the math question, but there's also, but for the qualitative piece, that is an area where the council has some flexibility. If it determines that it is possible for the use, based on what's in the record, to dedicate forty percent of the space for use as a park. So what is it that actually ends up looking like? If those are the questions, then some of that might be able to be resolved in a discussion about conditions. Am I getting at what you're asking?
I, I think you are, and I think you're underscoring that it's a tricky calculation. So, thank you. So while I have, I, Linda, if this goes more to procedure than you're ready for, stop me. But while I have Savani, I would just, you know, in the beginning of the hearing, everybody's sort of on edge and nervous and there's a lot of ground rules to cover. And, and now that we've been together for two and a half hours, it might be easier for everybody to absorb what I think Savani told us at the beginning. Could you just review for us, Savani? Well, two things. One, will we on Friday be making two separate decisions, one on each of the two issues that have been remanded to us?
Um, those are both, those are both based on criteria, issues that are on remand about criteria that are sent back before the council on remand. And so the council will need to decide both of those issues to make its final decision. The overall decision will be whether or not to approve the use.
Correct.
But to reach that decision, there's two, two different criteria.
So we could, we could theoretically have opposing outcomes under two issues, but that would result in a denial of the application.
Yes, it, yes. If the, if one, you found that one condition was, one criterion was met, but the other one was not, then that would still result in a denial of the application.
Okay. And the part that I really want you to reaffirm or stress for everybody listening is your reading of the charter is that we need three votes, either for or against, to carry the day.
That's correct. And that is, that's an aspect of the charter that is somewhat unique to Manzanita, that it requires a concurrence of the majority of the members of city council to decide any question before the council. And so that's not necessarily, that's not part of the land use proceeding. That's not part of a typical proceeding, but that is what the requirement is for the council as a governing body to take an action. And so that's why we need three votes one way or the other, because a two-two, a two-two split, although typically, or in, in, in other cities or in the general process, that might result in a denial. Here, that results in no decision at all because of this that just wrinkle in the city's charter.
And so what would be the practical consequence of a two-two vote?
That the city would, could violate the one hundred and twenty day rule because it wouldn't have made a, a final decision within the timeframe.
What would, what would the applicant's remedy be for that?
There are, there, the one possibility is that the, the consequences include that the land use process moves rather than being a, a city decision that is controlled by the land use process that goes to Luba. It can move into a lawsuit in the circuit court, so not going through the land use process anymore, but going to a court in a lawsuit against the city. It decided by a decision maker other than the city and can potentially result in attorney's fees being awarded against the party that has to bring that action because the city failed to make a decision within the one hundred and twenty day timeframe.
And in that scenario, what happens to the fifteen proposed conditions of approval?
Um, I, you know, it's, the city doesn't, the city no longer, it depends on how the, the lawsuit moves forward, but there is a world in which the city may no longer have the ability to attach certain or all of those conditions because the city would no longer be the decision maker.
So who makes the decision about whether it goes through the legal process or directly or back to Luba?
Well, if the, if the decision is made within the one hundred and twenty day time clock and there is an appeal by either side, then that would be, that would be, the appeal would be to Luba. If there's no decision made within that one hundred and twenty day timeframe, then this is where we get into that alternate possibility that it goes to a court and not to Luba.
And that would be the applicant's prerogative?
Yes.
So is there a remedy to a two-two? I mean, is there, do we have a, let's say it's a two-two. Can we rediscuss or, I mean, is there, are we just stuck? If there's, the first vote is a two-two, are we stuck at a two-two?
Um, I, I think there's a, there's, there's nothing in the in the rules or the charter that I'm aware of that would prohibit the council from, or a council member from moving that the council reconsider the vote. And effectively, because you do, if you have a two-two, it's not, it wouldn't be an effective decision. So the council wouldn't have acted. And so there's nothing that would prevent the council from reconsidering, reopening deliberations and discussion and seeing if you can get someone to move. The interesting piece of that, I guess, is that there are, there's at least one member who will be voting, potentially two, who will not be able to participate in a discussion. And so you all kind of have to be on board based on just your discuss, based on just the deliberations and discussion that can actually take place.
And there's no way that the two individuals that are, two council members that are remanded have a way to maybe write down, there's just no way they can have any?
No, because we are in this, we're in this very limited exception in the law that allows for members who have stated an actual bias and recuse themselves to rejoin the proceedings. And the only way that they are able to do that is if they are limited to just the vote. So that's, that's just based on Oregon law when there are members of the decision-making body that either have actual conflicts or have actual bias, which is the case here. The rule of necessity allows them to participate, but in this very limited role. And so that could be, that could be not only a procedural violation that might go before Luba, but also the individual council members would have to worry about ethics concerns at that point.
Ah, okay. That's really important.
I just want to check you on one thing to make sure I, I followed. So normally a motion to reconsider under our rules would only be permissible by somebody who was among the prevailing majority on the motion that is being asked to be reconsidered. You're saying because a two-two vote is a, in fact, it's a non-action. Whether we call it a motion for reconsideration or not, there is, there could be a mechanism to attempt to take a action the second time.
Yeah, yes, because there would be no, technically no action at all.
Good.
So are there any, Jerry, any other questions?
I don't.
Okay. So it looks like we've got a lot to think about. We will be back to make the decision. We'll continue the discussion on July twenty eighth at ten AM via Zoom, conduct our final deliberations and make a final decision on the twenty eighth, Friday the twenty eighth. And in the interim, we have a lot to think about.
Linda, just a moment. We did skip over number two, the deciding of the Lenita. Are we gonna do that?
Oh, 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 I am so sorry. You're right. You, that. So on the agenda, on the agenda, we have a, a discussion of the purchase and sale agreement for five forty-three Lenita. Leila, do you want to, to give us what we are needing to consider?
Yeah, thank you very much. This should be quick, I hope, but we have a request from the buyer to extend the due diligence phase of the purchase and sale agreement for the sale of Old City Hall. And the reason for that is, is that the, and they've been doing a great job on doing their due diligence and being very on top of it, but the bank had required them to do a phase one environmental assessment. So that added some additional time that was outside of their hands effectively. So what, that required, it requires the council action because we'd be amending a contract, which is the purchase and sale agreement. I should note that they have conducted the ESA. They expect to get the final document, I think, in the next week or so. And the buyer has also deposited the second payment into the escrow account. So SAV is recommending that council make a motion to authorize the city manager to amend the purchase and sale agreement to extend the due diligence phase, and then that would ultimately extend the closing, the closing of the property by two weeks.
And you see no downside in that at all?
I don't, but we do recommend this be the only time we extend the due diligence phase. And because they have been working, they have been active in doing what they need to do and made the deposits that we feel that we should allow them a little grace time to accommodate the bank's request, which was unexpected.
Okay. Well, I'm going to pass the baton back to Mayor Simmons to conduct this vote.
Okay, well, Linda, thank you for handling the hearing. That was complicated. A great, a great job of juggling and making sure that everyone was heard. I appreciate you taking, taking that rather tricky and difficult piece over. So what we're looking for is a motion to authorize the city manager to extend the closing by two weeks so that the buyer of the City Hall property can extend their due diligence. Is that correct, Leila? Did I get that right?
Yes, that's, that's correct. Two weeks for the due diligence and then ultimately two weeks for the closing date.
Okay. And your recommendation is that this be the only time it be extended?
For this reason, yes, for the due diligence.
Okay. So do I have a motion from the floor?
I will make the motion. Before I do, I just want to ask Leila, it, I'm assuming that the buyer is in, in control of a lot of what needs to be done, but then presumably there are other third parties involved that have to finally sign off. So when we say two weeks, even if he does everything he's supposed to do in two weeks, do do we know that that's enough time to ensure that the bank reviews and accepts the report?
That's a good question. We do not. That was what they requested of us. So it's certainly council's prerogative to add additional time if you so choose. I do expect that they will get a decision fairly quickly. So my thinking is if you did do that, I would probably suggest no more than thirty days.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm not looking to add more time, just a little bit of understanding on the backend. If somebody at the bank is on vacation in August and this doesn't get dealt with in timely fashion, that's as long as our, if, if our purchaser is acting in good faith, I want to be able to, you know, make the thing happen. So I would, I would move to allow the city manager to extend the due diligence period as requested by the purchaser.
My second.
Thank you, Jerry, and thank you, Linda. So let the record show that the motion has been made to extend the due diligence by the buyer and that that will extend the closing approximately two weeks, Leila? Or is it pretty, do you have a, a, a final date there?
Their request is for two weeks.
Okay. That includes weekends or are those business days?
I suspect it is inclusive of weekends.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Is there any other?
Mayor, I'm sorry, but you need to say all in favor.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you, Nancy.
All in favor, please say aye, supporting.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion is passed. Leila, you have, have the green light there.
Thank you.
Is there anything else that we need to address? All right, then we will post this meeting and return on Friday at 10 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.